I nominate Michelle Russell for the Chair for the Planning Commission.
I second.
I second.
All in favor?
What, uh, roll call.
I do roll call.
Thanks, Sam. I'll just, I don't have a list in front of me, so I'll do them as I see them on the screen. Mary Rodman?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Do I vote for myself?
Yeah, you can.
Yes.
Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Jessica Davalora?
Well, she's not Jessica's council. She's not Planning Commission. Doran Parmley.
She's hanging up.
Doran Parmley.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
And Peter Beasley?
Yes.
And Richard Black.
Richard Black, Kenneth?
Yes.
All right. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chairman?
I nominate Richard Black.
I'll second.
I'll second, too.
All right. And I'll have a roll call vote. Mary Rodman?
Yes.
Iva Michelle Russell?
Yes.
Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
Peter Beasley?
Yes.
And Richard Black?
Yes.
And any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Janet Miller Schmidt.
I second.
All right, be a roll call vote. Mary Rodman?
Yes.
Iva Michelle Russell?
Yes.
Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
Peter Beasley?
Yes.
And Richard Black?
Yes.
All right, I will turn it over to you, Chairman.
All right, under Old Business and for everybody who's watching, we've got the agenda on the chat box, right? Right, Nate?
As well as the minutes, and I'm about to pick the agenda item as soon as you announce it.
Perfect, okay. We're going to go to Bane Property final plat. Garrett?
Sure. Mr. Childers, the surveyor, has requested to withdraw this property, but I'd recommend a denial for it, an actual formal vote for denial.
And why is that?
Um, so essentially, basically, I recommend taking action on any items on the agenda, and just so that there's no confusion, it'll kind of, it'll reset the clock for recent middle of this plat, whenever they're ready in the future.
Any questions? Do we take a vote on that, Sam?
Yeah, you need a motion to deny and have a roll call, and second a roll call. I'm actually motioning to deny it.
Ooh. I think Peter got his in first. I need a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Richard got his in first, second, or first, or first, second. Roll call vote, Peter Beasley?
Yes.
Richard Black?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
Mary, Marilyn Rodman?
Yes.
Iva Michelle Russell, yes, and Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that finishes Old Business. We're going to move to New Business, Carden Property. Garrett?
Sure, so this one was submitted to me. It's taking three existing lots and consolidating them into two lots. I've worked with Mr. Childers on this, and he has addressed all of the changes that are requested. The only thing that's lacking is we had a bit of confusion in whether it was on septic or if it was on sewer, and we were kind of working through that over this past week, and so that's the only certificate that it's lacking because we just clarified that it is on septic. So it will need to have the soils mapped. It will have to go through TDEC for the signature processes, but after the, outside of that, I'd recommend this for approval pending the, the signature from TDEC.
Members, any questions?
Is this customary that we do that without all the signatures being on it? Garrett?
Sure, I mean, it has happened, and it is fairly common. And I believe Mr. Childers, I think I saw him on the chat, but he may be able to speak to the, he said it's been signed off by TDEC previously, the lot that it was subdivided.
Is, is he here?
He's here, Nate.
All right, who am I looking for?
All right, so you're going to...
John Childers.
John Childers.
Oh, yes. Give me just a second, fine. There's a lot of folks on here.
Oh, yeah.
John Childers. Asked to unmute.
Hello?
There he is.
Yes.
Garrett?
The, uh, what was the question?
Is it customary whenever that, uh, it's not signed off, all the signatures have not been signed off, and just want to ask for us to go ahead and approve this pending, and Garrett said he thought so. What were you saying, Garrett, about the, uh, the plat?
Um, I believe it was, I believe Mr. Childers said that the, the lot, I believe Lot 27A, had recently been subdivided and ultimately signed off by TDEC, so it had been reviewed relatively recently by TDEC. Is that correct, Mr. Childers?
Yeah, the plat has been reviewed by TDEC just a few weeks ago, yeah.
I think you're, I think you're safe in going ahead and approving it subject to TDEC's approval. It's, it's not, I mean, he can't go forward with a septic system without TDEC's approval in any way.
Okay.
So a proper motion would be to approve subject to TDEC's approval.
I need a motion on the floor?
So moved.
All right, I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Peter Beasley?
Yes.
Richard Black?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
Marilyn Rodman?
Yes.
Iva Michelle Russell, yes, Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Send that on. Thank you so much, Mr. Childers.
Thank you.
All right, now going to zoning map amendments. Sam, I, do you want Sam or Garrett to address why we're here?
I guess it's Sam.
And Garrett can correct me if I'm wrong. The recent lawsuit has uncovered for us some zoning amendments that were done in the past that were done without proper public notice. Two of them are before you tonight. One of them, the FIPS tract, I believe, is a situation where the, the city told him it's all right to proceed based on the information that they had, and he has gone forward, and so really what we're doing is going back and cleaning this up. Am I correct on, Earl, you're the, you're the expert on this one, aren't you?
Yes, sir, you are correct. He has constructed a building there. He had a, he does have a proper building permit, and actually, I'll be going tomorrow to do a final on this project. That's, that's where we are.
This is, this is just a cleanup of a technical issue that occurred a couple of years ago.
Gotcha. So we need to have a public comment period, is that right?
Yes.
All right, is there any neighbors, are there anybody who would like to comment on the rezoning of, it's the FIPS property from R1 to C2? Raise your hand, and that's down in the reactions. Button on the bottom of your screen, if you click on it, you will see raise hand, and then Nate will let you in and have your three minutes.
See Mr. Costin's there, Michelle. I don't know if he wants to speak or not, or Nate.
I haven't anybody raising their hands yet, so I have posted both the original ordinance and a map in the chat box for everybody to look at.
So, so if no one's raising their hand, the record can reflect that you've given an opportunity for a public hearing.
All right, and then we move to the vote, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, I need a, a motion to change the FIPS property from R1 to C2.
So moved.
All right, Peter is a first. I need a second?
Second.
All right, roll, any discussion? All right. We're going to move to roll call. Peter Beasley?
Yes.
Uh, hang on, I've got a, I've got a hand raised.
Up, got a hand.
Well, it went down again.
I think that was Shane Costin. I think he's the property owner.
Okay, Shane, would you like to speak? Let's see, let me, I asked him to unmute. Shane, would you like to speak?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I just, Mr. Gary, I thought, said I might, might have to request it at B C2, or is there anything that I need to do?
No.
All right.
Uh, you're, you're good to go, Mr. Colston, and I love the, the logo on the side of your building.
Thank you.
That's awful.
Well, technically, he's not good to go until the, the City Commission approves the rezoning.
Correct.
But we're just cleaning up a, something that's already there, so we don't anticipate an issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, roll call votes. Peter Beasley?
Yes.
Richard Black?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Doran Parmley?
Yes.
Marilyn Rodman?
Yes.
Iva Michelle Russell, yes, Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Let's move to the second zoning map amendment. This is a request for an R3 to a C3, which is RBT Enterprises. I, I'm sure we have a lot of people that would want to comment on this, so raise your hand. You get three minutes, and Nate will, is, is the person that will maneuver you around so that you can say your piece.
Should Bron have the, should the RBT person have the opportunity to speak, or you going to leave?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna let the neighbors first, unless there's a, an order?
I don't know.
Whatever, whatever suits the commission.
Okay.
I've got two hand raised, two hands raised thus far. You want me to open firsthand?
Yep.
All right, so before I do this, I'm going to go ahead and set the timer. We're gonna, we're gonna allow, ask everyone to keep their comments to three minutes, so to make sure that they get all their time, I'm gonna set this up first.
And once, and once again, to raise your hand, you go to the reactions on the bottom of the screen, you click it, and then on the bottom, you'll see raise hand, and then there's a number next to it. How will we see a number?
I'll see another. All right, that's Casey Reed.
All right, I just ask the first person who's raised their hand to unmute.
Mr. Best?
The guests? Yes, there they are.
We're ready. Are you ready?
I am ready, if y'all want to begin.
Okay, my name is Mary Beth Best. I live at 521 Lots and Hazard Place in Mont Eagle, and I am, I am asking the Planning Commission to consider the fact that the current property owners in the residential area built and bought our homes with a very secure and solid residential buffer between the residential neighborhood and the commercial area. We expect you to honor that. We expect you to, to not rezone this entire property to commercial. It is detrimental to our property values and our health and well-being in our homes. You must, you must, you must study the laws, study the ordinances, know them, and know that you must keep the residential zone buffer, not an acre, the whole track around Tressel between us and, and development, and protect our homes. There is a letter that was submitted to you from the American Lung Association. We have sent you multiple ordinance quotes and, and studies done. There's a study done by Jim Waller on the environmental problems with buildings so close to people's homes. Please, please look at those, and please make the right decision. You must protect the integrity of the developments that are already existing, and I'm going to yield the board to Mr. Best.
Hi, folks. I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on what Mary Beth said here. The fact is, I, I really wish you would consider preserving the character of existing development around the neighborhood, and the homes were here first. You know, the commission nor the council is, has to comply with, with the town's ordinances on grading or earth moving, and so the project had already started prior to approval. We felt like, you know, we've not had much of a say-so in this entire process, and just because someone purchased a piece of property with this zoning does not legally give them the right to operate, you know, the, whatever they want to on the property. The Lots and Hazard Development, it was zone R3, initial R3 zoning would be compatible to allow, by allowing an intense commercial use like a truck stop so close to residential property is bad planning and conflict with the provisions of the zoning ordinance that call for the preservation of character of existing development. So I remind you, the RBT does not have any vested legal right to the zoning continuing as it is simply because it purchased the property. Any work has been done, has been done at its own risk, and the commission or the council are legally bound to zone any of the parcels in the truck stop site C3 regardless of what they were zoned in the past. Your job is to make a rational decision on zoning in light of the stated purposes of the ordinance and the general plan, which we've yet to see. Rightfully, the parcel zone R3 should absolutely remain R3, and the commission or the council should consider zoning the remaining parcels of the truck stop site, either R3 or C3. At a minimum, the council and the commission should consider keeping the conditional special exception use, like the 2016 ordinance, which requires the truck stop to go before the border of zoning appeals and does not allow it as a by right use. So there, there are options that the council and the commission have here, that this isn't rubber stamped through for the fact that somebody bought a piece of property thinking that it was C3, and they should be allowed to do whatever they want to on it. So we ask you to consider your own zoning ordinances, the law itself, and ask what the purpose of the commission is in the first place, which is to protect the welfare, the general welfare of the people surrounding and the people in the neighborhood. So preserve the character of the existing development. We were here first, you know, and so just because someone wants to come in and build a monstrous truck stop in the neighborhood does not mean that it's, it's, it's good development for the city. Thanks.
Thanks, um, thanks, Beth. Just so the counts, the commission knows, because they were two individuals, she spoke until a minute twenty-four, and then I gave him the balance of the time plus an additional minute, so that each of them had three minutes, just trying to be fair here, just because they're married, they are, remain individual people. I'm going to go to the next person who has their hand raised. I have a, you know, we thought it was going to set, allow people to come in based on the order that they raised their hands. It's not doing that. It's not the order, so if you've had your hand raised, we will get to you. I'm just going to run down the list.
Nate, check your phone. You got the list there.
Yes, so is that the order that they were submitted?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wow, okay. Well, I have allowed Sandra's iPad. Are you ready to go?
I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can.
Okay. My name is Sandra Terrell. I live on Tressel Road directly behind the property in question. My husband and I have lived in Mont Eagle for over forty years. We got married in nineteen eighty-one and moved to, made our home here in Mont Eagle, and I've worked at the hospital at Swanee for that long, and I just wanted to say that we had tried to do everything right, bought our property, worked really, really hard over many years, and were able to afford to have a, a home, and we tried to do everything right. We bought the home. There were houses on that property. We were assured that it was all zoned residential, and there was no expectation of any development there. So, you know, fast forward to, I guess, several years ago when Rocky, you know, built there, we, you know, met with the owner of Rocky Top, and he promised us that he would, you know, apply, like, you know, his ordinances, put up a nice screening fence, plant nice trees. He was very nice at that time, and so, you know, after a year or so, nothing had changed. We're looking at fires piled up. We're looking at burned out tractor trailers, so we complained. We called at that time that since we had pissed him off, that nothing would be better. So he did eventually put up a rickety wooden fence that would not really block anything. He also added some rusted chain link fence that obviously had come from another property, and he planted a few trees that were maybe about fifteen inches tall, and the majority of those ended up dying. So now you can see why, one reason why we are so nervous about this development. I know that there are other people involved, but we have really, over time, had a, had a problem. I do ask that you take into account what Billy and Mary Beth said, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, their input, and there's been lots of research done, and we know that no rezoning ever took place properly. I mean, there's just no record of a property being rezoned that we can ever find. We were never notified. There were no signs put upon the property it was going to be rezoned, and we feel, we, you know, feel that that was done improperly, and I think that was, that's been admitted. The last Planning Commission did listen to our concerns, and they were trying to help us, but the election happened. They were dismissed, and the new Planning Commission is there now, so we're just asking you to please do, you know, the same thing that they were doing, and help us preserve our property value of, you know, the, the property along Tressel Road could remain as a barrier. The rest of the property could be, be developed, but the neighbors need to be protected. You know, a hundred or more tractor trailers are going to be detrimental to our health, and we're just asking for your mercy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thanks, thanks for keeping up with the time. All right, next is Casey Reed.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Deborah Reed. I own commercial property in Mont Eagle, right around the corner from where the proposed truck stop is planned. I concur completely with Mary Beth and, and Billy. They, they said it all, and I don't want to take up a lot of time. I, I want other people to be able to speak, but I just think this, this would be a huge mistake, and once it's done, there's no going back. We've sent many, many research materials on, you know, noise pollution, air pollution, traffic, lighting. I mean, I can't imagine it's going to, you know, what the lighting is going to be. I probably can see it from Murphy's World, but maybe not. At any rate, I, you know, I, I hope that the board will do the right thing and protect the citizens that li, live around here. I feel sorry for these people that live right behind this place. I mean, this is, is shocking, but also I, I want to ask something, and I don't want to, you know, make anybody mad or anything, but I'm just curious. How many people on this, in this meeting, on this board, in the mayor's office, does anybody have a personal relationship with this group or with Mr. Kilgore? And, and if they do, I think that they should absolutely recuse themselves from doing anything with this project. So that's all I had to say, and I'll sign off. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next is Lanier Frank.
Thank you, Nate. Lanier Frank here. Let me, I do my video, show you my COVID hair, which is awesome. Thank you. Not as good as your beard. Sixty years in, I've been going to Mont Eagle for all my life. It's, it's not where I live all the time. I do choose to live there every summer. My grandmother is a Sartan from Tracy City and Mont Eagle, going back to, gosh, Bethany, how long? Hundred and twenty years? But I, I moved away. I, I love the area. I'm committed to supporting the community. I was backed up for thirteen years this week, excuse me, thirteen weeks this year, sorry, because of COVID, and I just, I, I, I want you all to succeed. I want us all to succeed. I think a truck stop is a, where proposed is a terrible idea. If you cross the interstate, folks who are my era and over will look at those concrete pads on the other side of twenty-four and know that those were failures. Let's not do that again. I'm done.
Thanks for your comments. All right, next is Lucy Keeble.
Can you hear me, see me?
Hear you.
Hear you.
I can't see you.
How do, how do you see?
Um, your video is on. You either have your camera covered up, or you have a preference set to maybe an image, and the image is black. We, we can see you. You're up, but you're, but you're...
Okay. Well, I'm a Luddite, so you'll have to excuse me. Shall I just proceed without, without my face? I'm trying to figure out if there's something here to...
All right, down on video, do you see that at the bottom of the screen?
Yeah, I do.
All right, so you're gonna click on it, that little up area, the carrot or whatever you call it?
Okay.
Actually, just start it. Actually, just...
Oh, did I just turn it off, and it's, and it's...
There you go. There you go.
Am I there? No, that's Shane. That's not me.
Well, Shane, you're in Valhalla.
That's funny. Well, let me, I don't want to take up too much time here, but a couple, a couple of things. I wanted to give Mr. Graber, Brian, a chance to speak to a particular question. Brian, you and I have spoken on multiple occasions at the different meetings when we weren't restricted by COVID, but I wanted to ask you, is there something other than a truck stop that you and your wife and your brother-in-law would consider that would work for you on this property that we could separate?
Lucy, we're not, we're not going to go a, a back and forth. You've got three minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll read the American Lung Association letter then. It was written on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, to the Mont Eagle Town Council. This is written by Christine Hart, and she says, "Our e public health concerns regarding proposed TA Petro Truck Plaza in the town of Mont Eagle. Dear Mont Eagle Town Council, as a public health organization serving Tennesseans, we are writing regarding the location of the proposed TA Petro Truck Plaza in the town of Mont Eagle. Offer health considerations prior to reaching your decision. Transportation is a primary source of air pollution in Tennessee and the Cumberland Plateau. Pollution from vehicles, especially heavy-duty vehicles, is harmful to public health and can result in a range of problems, such as asthma attacks, heart attacks, wheezing, coughing, and pulmonary inflammation. Children, older adults, people with lung disease, cardiovascular disease, and diabetes are particularly vulnerable. In Grundy, Marion, and Franklin Counties, there are more than sixteen hundred children and sixty-five hundred adults with asthma who could be at risk of an..." who could be at risk of an asthma attack on bad air days. Additionally, studies show that air pollution contributes to cardiovascular harm and increases the risk of premature death. Considering that nearly nine thousand residents. Can someone mute their audio?
Yeah, that was Ida Michelle. She's she's muted.
Okay, considering that nearly, like the dog, I think he was weighing in on this. He's very upset. Considering that nearly nine thousand residents in these respective counties are living with cardiovascular diseases, clean air will help protect their health and their lives. Lung Association in Tennessee urges citing decisions for potential new sources of emissions such as the TA Petro Truck Plaza to minimize proximity to community establishments such as homes, schools, libraries, in your citizen centers and parks. Community members should not have to live, work, go to school, or play near sources of pollution that put their health at risk. Further local officials, I'm almost through, further local officials should take particular care to ensure that low-income communities historically, who have historically borne a disproportionate burden of air pollution, are not further impacted. Given the overwhelming research about heavy traffic areas and health impacts from trucks and vehicle emissions, the American Lung Association in Tennessee respectfully encourages the town of Mont Eagle to consider these health impacts prior to making a decision which would increase emissions in a location impacting Mont Eagle residents' health.
Lucy.
The town of Mont Eagle has an opportunity to prevent.
We've gone over your time. Thank you. Um, we're we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move to the next um speaker. The next speaker, Merrill, uh, I'm sure you've you've unmuted yourself. Great. The next is Jane D. And I have asked her to unmute.
I'm there. Yes, I am there. I uh it's, I'm unable to start the video. But um I uh I uh go back from a family. Can you hear me all right, first of all?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm still not able, okay, start video, good. Um, I go back from a family that started coming to uh the Mont Eagle Assembly in the er the late eighteen hundreds. And I think most of you know, Assembly was started in eighteen eighty-two. And um I stopped coming to the the assemblies from the time I was about twenty. But I rejoined um and became part of it about three years ago. And I have um admitted myself to Mont Eagle and to the Assembly. And um I just, one of the things I wanted to point out is to think about some of the things we've already lost in Mont Eagle. And one of them is the Mont Eagle uh motel. And I think probably some of us remember eating um eating red eye gravy and and grits and, you know, uh wonderful old time breakfasts in that hotel. And and now it's gone. And consider the thought of if if we had somehow been able to restore that hotel, it would have been a landmark for uh this part of Tennessee. And my thoughts about the the truck stop are first and foremost about the neighbors. I mean, the idea of having to live that close to at a a place where trucks are going to be going in and out all day long, all night long, and all the reasons why it would be detrimental to the health of people that are near that area. But it also is going to be, if it happens, which I pray it doesn't, it it will be detrimental to the whole, not only to the whole town of Mont Eagle and to the Mont Eagle Assembly, but really to the whole plateau. And all the effort with the Mountain Route Trail and the South Cumberland State Park and the South Cumberland Community Fund, all these ways that have brought people together on the plateau. And we've been making really forward-going progress with in so many ways to have the a a truck stop be the entryway to the plateau, I think would be a terrible shame. And as I, as I just wrap this up, the the biggest thing I I really think about is the people that live right by it, that 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 how it would impact them. But there are many, many other reasons why it's not the right thing. Find some other um C uh C with the number after it, something aside from C three and a truck stop.
Your time, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next um person to comment is Brian Graber. Hang on, Brian, let's see, let me find you here. Gonna ask to unmute and lower. Hey, Brian, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Did it not work?
He's still muted.
Yeah, so he's got to unmute himself unless unless there was some delay. There he is.
All right, you're good. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you for having me and and thank you. And I'm glad we're all able to.
Brian, you might want to turn your video off to give you more bandwidth. I think you're not having a uh, I think you don't have enough bandwidth to show your video and to talk.
Okay, okay. Is that better?
Turn it off and see if that makes you clearer. Can you talk now?
It's off now. Is that better?
Maybe. So far, so good.
I can. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, you're much better now.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. You know, I I I wanna, I want to address some of the comments that preceded me. But I think I, you know, I'd rather, if I could, start with um with with just with just voicing a little bit more of an optimistic tone uh for the for the seventy-five percent or so of the community that continually has supported us and um, you know, and asked us to be here and prayed for us to continue to 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 stay strong throughout this process and do uh and and to and to keep with it and to not not give up. And um and it's been a, it's been an ordeal as as we all know and we're all very well aware of. But I think what I'd like to stress as much as anything tonight, uh, we we know about the hundred and thirty-plus jobs that it's going to bring. But it's not a truck stop. It's a travel center. It's several restaurants. It's a food court. It's um, it's so much more than that. And and you know, boutique and clothing options and 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 just it's going to be a beautiful building. It's going to be a beautiful complex. And for all the people that have supported us that that, you know, haven't been as um haven't necessarily had their voices heard throughout this process, except for at the polls, uh whether it be online or or at the or at the ballot box last November. Um, they do want growth and they do want transformation and 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 more jobs and more tax revenue. And and we all have different ideas about uh what progress is. And I understand that. I I'm very set in my ways in some ways, too. And and I don't, I don't, I don't mean to to come across um condescending about that in any way. Um, but for for the comments about about trucks and all of the things that I've heard, to me, it kind of, it's almost the equivalent of 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 thinking about a place like Sturgis, South Dakota, having an argument about whether or not a Harley shop could be approved because people don't want motorcycle uh people in their community. The trucks are already here. We're not bringing the trucks that aren't, you know, there there the, there is a, there is a travel center next door to us that is the number five ranked travel center in the pilot family of seven hundred and eighty stores. There are trucks parked all over the exit and entrance ramps. There are trucks parked behind on our, on our property, behind Jesse's Grill. There are trucks over at uh the Chinese restaurant. They're already here. Um, the other thing I would say about that is what we, what we don't necessarily have is we haven't had um, you know, the ability to monitor all that activity as well as we possibly could have because we haven't had uh, we haven't had other other businesses that were open, you know, past five or six o'clock in that area to to monitor that activity. The travel center will be transformative in so many ways and bring so much opportunity and growth uh to an to an area that needs it. We're 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 right next to an interstate, obviously. Um, there are already homes that are right behind the Pilot Travel Center. Some of them as close uh to us as some of the other property uh properties that we're talking about. Their property values are almost identical if you go look to uh to the houses that are further away from the travel center. So so much of this conversation is just kind of being driven, uh uh, you know, in my opinion, is fear mongering and 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 sort of as unwarranted. But but again, I'd rather stay positive and focused on the great things it's going to do for the community and for the people that have shown us love and support throughout this process and prayed for us to stay strong throughout the entire thing. We want to say as a family, thank you for that. And we and we certainly want to say that we respect this community and love it just as much as some of the other people that you have heard here before. And you know, it's not a, it's not a mom and pop operation. It is a fifteen million dollar investment into this community with large financial institutions, as well as our family's money, going into it. It will be, it will be an operation like that you haven't seen um, you know, on this mountain before. And and we want to give back to the community as well. We want to be a a a, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to do all of the things that we continually talk about. But I think, you know, you know, my frustration with 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 some of this is that we're not, we're not talking enough about, you know, the other seventy-five percent of the people that 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 feel uh differently than than some of the voices that we.
Brian, your time is up. I I think you're gonna have a a lot more time to talk about this at the public forum. We've got somebody else who's raising their hand, so um can I'm gonna move on to the next person. It's a, it's a little unclear to me whether you are a public, because you are making the petition. Um, I'll let you run another minute long. Um, you you, but I I'm gonna move on to the next person if that's all right. Thanks. All right, the next person who has their hands raised, can you find them here? Um, I'm gonna ask them to unmute and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Dee Dee Clemens. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I love Mont Eagle. I love so many of the faces I see. I just want to present this other business owner. I've been here sixteen years, small, just like this tale, in the assembly. Paid until paid my town taxes every month for making it happen. And I just want everybody to know that this affects my business. I was concerned a few years ago, the light, the current light from the Petro, and not the Petro, the Pilot Truck Stop. And now, I guess we're building this, I have a lot of money invested, it's going to be impacted. I just wanted to present this as a business owner's business. And I care about everybody deeply. I wish you well and I pray for the right decisions. I understand RBT, I've been a business owner all my life and I empathize, but I don't think this is the right development.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I don't see any more raised hands.
All right, everyone, raise your hands, raise your hands. Do you want anything that you want to add to the discussion? This is the time.
All right, another hand from Lucy Keeble. Lucy, the way we we did this is we're gonna allow each person to comment once on each agenda item and you will have time to comment again during the public comment section. But since you've already commented on this agenda item, uh, we're not gonna allow repeats for any of the participants. Is there anyone else who has not spoken who would like to speak on this topic? Uh, we've got another hand here. This is Suzie Lipscomb and she has not spoken.
Can you hear Suzie?
Are you, you here? I've asked her to unmute.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That better? Uh, yes, I, my family has been coming to the Mont Eagle area for now, what, four generations? So kind of, you've heard that whole song and dance. Um, through this process, I've gotten to know the neighbors in the immediate area. And I I always thought of Mont Eagle as being um a really special community because of the way, the care that everyone took for each other. And I am shocked that the neighbors who are so profoundly affected by the possibility of this development are being dismissed like they are. I mean, I, the property value that the the decrease in property value that they are facing is significant. And I, they were here first and I I just, it it it's shown me a side of Mont Eagle that is frankly very disappointing. I I I I don't know what else to say. And also in researching and studying all of this, I spoke with someone at the Appalachian Gateway Initiative. And she made an excellent point to me that a truck stop, a new development, yes, we need truck stops. Yes, we need places for truckers. But a truck stop could be located any number of places. There are other places besides the plateau that could very well serve the trucking industry. But Dubose Conference Center, High Point Restaurant, the Mont Eagle Assembly cannot be relocated anywhere else. I, they can't, i- i- it, it, they, it's just an impossibility. And I would like for you all to consider that when you consider your decision. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, any other hands? We've got an iPhone. Is that iPhone two?
I can ask them to unmute. Let's see. iPhone two, are you there? Is iPhone two here?
Who is it, Nate?
I don't, I don't know who it is. They they are unmuted. Hello? iPhone guest, you have unmuted yourself. I'm lowering your hand. Maybe that'll encourage you to see that you're on. iPhone two, there it is. Uh, we're not able to hear you, but you're unmuted, so it has something to do with your with your iPhone setup. All right, can you talk now?
No, can't hear him.
We're not able, not able to hear.
You're unmuted. Maybe your phone is muted. Maybe check your iPhone and see if the settings, if you've got it muted.
Yeah, I think that would make him not be able to hear us. I'm not sure what's going on here.
Yeah, because he's not. He's off.
There was another one, Nate. Did you get it?
Yeah, let's go ahead to.
I think it was Bert.
Back down again. I am not seeing any hands raised. I'm wondering if there is a better way. Oh, you know what his problem is? Uh, iPhone two, I think if you will unplug your earpiece, maybe you have an earpiece that doesn't have a microphone.
He doesn't look like he's wearing a headphone.
He had something hanging.
Uh, I believe Berkey Gladstone had her hand raised.
He's, now put it down while.
I did. But then I put it back down because I, hello. I, I wasn't sure if I was going to want to, you know, speak or not. I've been living in Swanee for the past 26 years as a teacher, maybe taught one of your kids, who knows? But moved to, down to North, on North Bluff this summer. My concern mainly when I heard about the truck stop was that another truck stop on top of the truck stop that we already had and the impact really that it has on the quality of life here in our community. Gods are extremely important. I know that for development, everyone knows that. But the pollution, the area, the residents that live in the area, those points that are already have been talked about with the, you know, community, the places around there, the park and the library and the ballpark and all that. So I, I really have very concerned also for the residents there. But the impact of the health pollution, light pollution, what impact it will have on our water supply and sewage. And I'm sure that all that will be addressed in terms of that. But just it concerns me double the trucks, double the pollution. We already have, as Mr. Graber has already said, that we already have so many trucks here. Do we need a whole nother doubling of all these trucks that are around and putting a lot of pressure on the road? And the traffic and the noise and the light, as I said. So I, I just feel like it's a, it is a quality of life issue. And would love to see more development in, in Mont Eagle. I think that's important for us as, as a community to grow. But that it be an intentional development that might have not so bad of an impact on the quality of life for the people who live right around there and for all of us. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. iPhone two, and that looks like Mr. Berry, I think. He's still apparently not, not able to make his thing work. I bet it, I, all right.
I think taking off the earphone, maybe that's it.
He did make a comment in the chat.
iPhone two to everybody. I will make my comment. Okay. All right. Thank you for your opportunity. Sorry, you're having technical difficulties. I'm going to go ahead and mute that. Are, are there others that would like to make a comment who have not?
All right. Last chance. Last chance. Did, now members, before we move on to taking, well, we will need a motion. Do we have any questions for Mr. Graber since he is here?
And I've gone ahead and, and asked Brian to unmute himself. By asking directions, questions directly.
I'm driven by the property several different times over the course of the several, you know, couple of weeks since I've been, or I guess it's been a month or so now that we've been on part of the council. And I know that I've seen where there is a section in the back of this, this area, it is wetland area. So it's not this entire piece that's going to be developed. I guess we have to, if we rezone it, we have to rezone the whole thing. Is that correct? And maybe that's a Sam question.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, that, that may be a question for your attorney, you know, as we, as we've kind of gone through this process. But, but from our perspective, the wetlands, when we, when we got permitted from the state, which happened back in the summer of last, last summer, they designated about two, two plus acres in the back corner there as wetlands. Which, which was, you know, fine with us because, you know, I think we can do some things from a landscaping perspective to really, you know, kind of enhance and beautify that whole area back there in the back corner. All the way around protecting, you know, you know, the neighbors that we're talking about here too and, and the, and the back as well. And we, you know, originally our idea was to use cypress trees and, and that type of thing as a, as a buffer. Then as, as we know, we went through, you know, back at the end of July and the first meeting in August, when it was recommended for approval. At that time, the, the holdup was the neighborhood, the neighborhood wanted us to put it, to put a wall in place. That had been a newly adopted ordinance. And so they wanted a masonry type of wall, a structure about eight foot tall. We agreed to do that. And then, you know, then we got into this, this whole thing with the, the three day versus the 15 day controversy on the passing of the ordinance a couple of years ago or whatever. But, but no, I think there's a lot of things that we can do to make that area look really, really good. And the fact that that wetlands area is, is going to be, always going to be treated as a, as a wetlands area, I think will actually give us an opportunity to do some things aesthetically that will even make the, the property more attractive than it otherwise would have been. But to answer your, your question, no, that the other four and a half acres or whatever we're talking about in that back section would, would need to be rezoned for the property, for a lot of different reasons. I don't want to get into the technical reasons of it.
Right, right. Brian, just, just to, I guess, have your voice on the record into, to, I guess, maybe just hear your viewpoint. A lot of citizens are asking, you know, why, why did we choose that piece of property other than something that was on the other side of the, the highway? Where there are, you know, where it's, it is very spосп populated and has much less risk of trucks coming through the main part of town. I know that as a planning, as a member, as a town member, we're not going to want these 18 millars coming through our, our strip of, of where we've been beautifying and building up business. So what, what was our reasoning behind using this piece of property instead of one of the other ones that we?
I mean, that's a great question. Yep, sorry. It was a great, that's a great question. There's several really good answers for it. We did a lot of marketing studies right from the beginning. I think, you know, just to address that point you made there at the very end, there's absolutely no reason for the trucks to be going through the, through the city. And if they were, if they would, they already would be. Because again, not to sound like a broken record, but, but that pilot that's, that's right there on the corner already is the fifth largest grossing pilot. 1.3 million gallons of diesel per mile. That's how many trucks are going in and out of there. So trust me, if, if, if it, if it was going to be something where the truck drivers decided to go through the town, they already would be going through town, whether or not we were there or not. But no, to answer the first point, part of your question, all the studies that we did showed, you know, because the ground's a little bit higher, obviously we already had an existing shop. We already had an existing five and a half acres there. It just made so much more sense. And we even think from a traffic perspective, not having only one option for trucks to turn into off of that exit is going to even out the flow a little bit and all that congestion that you see around the lunchtime hours, especially in front of the Pilot and the Wendy's is going to start to get smoothed out. So we actually think, and we've had some people from TDEC kind of, kind of talk to us about the same thing, that actually the traffic flow is likely to get, to, to get a little bit better, not worse with, with our presence being there.
Does TDEC feel that this is going to bring, you know, I, I have noticed that they are building another pilot down towards Manchester, finally at the AED, AC, I'm never going to say it wrong, but anyway, the Air Force Base exit. I've noticed that on my trips to Nashville, that we are having another truck stop being put in there. As well as I, I foresee one probably coming on the other side of the mountain in the future with the amount of, with the truck, trucks just, it's, it's building. It's not something that's going away. So I know that it, there are many truckers that, that to get to the top of the mountain, to have a place they can stop is very important because they need to refuel, they need to rest, they need to feed themselves before taking down the other side of the mountain. Our, you know, our, we forget that it's not an easy drive up and down that mountain.
It, it, it is. And, and you know, to, you know, there's so much, there's so much in what you just said that I try to piece, unpiece it. But, um, so the first part is, yeah, Love's is building a third store at exit 117 down there in Manchester. Their store on exit 89, which is about halfway between Mont Eagle and Nashville, is the number nine gross revenue loves in their system of 475 stops. The one at exit 158 toward Jasper is their number four store. It is just, it just happens to be one of the, the most congested interstates in the entire country. I think someone had told me that it's the number two, second most congested interstate in the country. And to your point, you know, my grandfather was a truck driver. My uncle's a truck driver. My brother-in-law used to drive trucks. My father-in-law was a truck driver. All these disparaging comments about truck drivers, it's, you know, sometimes I really have to find myself biting my tongue. We wouldn't have our food, our supplies, all the things that we really relied on during this pandemic. And the truck drivers are working every single day. And a lot of these poor guys are having to park on entrance ramps and exit ramps and all. Seen is, and you're seeing at an exit one. Demand is trying.
Why you're cutting in and out?
Trucks everywhere. And, and so, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to meet the needs that, that is there. But, but that doesn't mean that, you know, that I don't, I don't, I, I really sometimes have a hard time understanding the negativity surrounding it. Some of these places are. One in Columbia, South Carolina is gorgeous. What was that?
Uh, and it may not be a question you can ask. I need to ask the council. Is, is TDEC giving any indication that with the, with the current road, road that's there, is, is this going to be enough? Enough for, to accommodate, you know? Do we have, does Mont Eagle have the sewage structure, the sewage, the water, the police force, the fire force, the, the, the things that are needed to actually, to actually make this project go forward?
Was that one for me or was that one for somebody else?
I guess it's infrastructure. You know, I'm, I, I see this as a large, you know, yeah, we're talking about multiple jobs. We're talking about lots of things for the truckers to use as well as bringing revenue into Mont Eagle. My question is, do we, we, if you choose, if this does get rezoned and you're able to move forward, have you researched, is Mont Eagle actually have the infrastructure to support this?
They do. And then, you know, to the, to the other point is, is the detention ponds that are going to be required to be, to be fully permitted and built are going to be so much stronger than what was there previously, obviously. And some of that flow will contribute to being able, you know, we think, you know, to be able to even to bring, to, to help the problem, not make it worse, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Does TDEC suggest that we need to make that a wider road there? You know, I'm just thinking about future construction that might need to be done, trying to look at it all so I understand.
That would be, that would be T-Dot. TDEC is the, is, you know, issued, issued the land permits for us to start developing it. And, and they were very comfortable with it. And even in our initial conversations with T-Dot, we don't think that there's going to be any need to widen the road. In fact, there's already, you know, a third lane down through there, a turning lane. It's, it's fairly wide and our plan to, to, to bring trucks in and out. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty unique plan. It's, you know, kind of going to be, it's going to move the trucks away from the passenger vehicles, which should keep everything separated and move pretty freely and smoothly through the, through the complex. It's a pretty big complex. You know, the pilot operates on, I think, about eight and a half or nine acres. We're, you know, we're going to have 13 or 14. So we're going to have a little bit more freedom and a little bit more room to be able to have the trucks not all get bottled up in one specific spot.
Am I able to ask that question to Maryland Mayor as well? Like, do you feel like we have the infrastructure to support something like this?
Don John was going to be on here to not to address that. Of course, we discussed at the last council meeting, the engineer is going to start doing studies. He feels like it's sufficient, but he will do studies as well, working with any development that we do. McCollum is for his capacity. He said that they felt like it was. Butner is on here. He may can address that because he works with John. Do you see Nate, if John is on here or not?
I don't, I don't see John.
Let's see if Keith can comment on that because he worked, he works with Water and Sew as well. I know the engineer is coming up to start doing close studies.
Yeah, what, what I'm hoping that the, the engineer can provide us with next month is a sort of macro level sewer assessment. The water issue has pretty much been put to bed with all the interconnections. So we, we've got that covered. But I, I'm hoping that the, that our engineer can give us sort of a macro assessment. This is our, this is our size of our current wastewater treatment plant. These are the number of connections we currently have. These are how many connections we have. So my, my hope is that we'll have that data at the next council meeting when we talk about this issue.
We do.
Question, then my next question goes, and I don't know if we're in the right spot to be asking, if I'm doing this right. If I need to do something different, let me know. But Garrett, my question then too is, at this point with the rezoning, if we, if we as a, as a planning committee choose to rezone this and then it moves forward, is, it does not mean the truck stop is approved. It does only change the zoning and that then it has to have, go through multiple steps in order to be approved by this council. Is this correct?
Sorry, sorry Garrett.
Well, actually, we've got to unmute Sam.
Sorry, I muted it previously. That, that's correct. This is just a recommendation to the town council who will then have to hear it twice at two separate meetings and hold a public hearing at, at one of those meetings as well.
And then even if it is approved, we'll go back to the issue of the site plan that was referred to earlier, which would have, you know, I'm sure this, this planning commission would have a viewpoint as to what's adequate for that.
Some of the, some of the things that I think about as, as, as a part of the planning committee is that, you know, several years ago, I was on planning committee before. I want to, I, I really want to say that was unbelievably five, eight years ago, something like that. I'm not sure. But we spent a lot of time looking at the growth of Mont Eagle and, and future development. We're not perfect. We, I think we have, have a good grasp on looking at the future growth of Mont Eagle. One of the things that we really thought about was that we are a gateway to not only the, the plateau and, and the beautiful natural areas that we have. We also are, you know, a major interstate exit that is at the top of a mountain that I know several years ago, I knew that McDonald's, I used to work commercial real estate, that the McDonald's was one of the top producing in the entire nation. So we have so many people coming through this area and we are very fortunate to have two different exits that I think we could, that in our original planning, we were thinking one exit as the gateway to the plateau and to this natural and tourist connection as well as dedicating ourselves to have, having some of those resources for the service and, and, and work that has to be done in our nation as well. We have very different communities across the plateau. Not only have tourists and second homes, we also have people that have lived here for, you know, Um, not only have tourists and second homes, we also have, um, uh, people that have lived here for, you know, some of us a hundred years, you know, families that have been here for plus, a hundred plus years. Uh, so we have, and, and very different economic groups throughout the entire plateau. So I think we have a really big challenge to make sure that, you know, we do think about everybody that's out there, but also look at the growth and, um, remember that we did start this plan and maybe make some modifications as we go. Uh, one thing that this, this kinda has opened my eyes to is the fact that we have several, um, that we look at our commercial areas and make sure that we've zoned those as the correct, C-one, C-two, C-three as we move forward, to make sure that we're bringing in the right businesses, um, as we continue to grow. Um, so I'm not, I'm not saying what I'm voting at this point, I'm just trying to put some things out there, uh, that we think about. Because, you know, this, this, I do hear the community members, I know that they have beautiful homes back there, I know several of you that live in that area, um, and it's hard when growth is at your back door, and especially, you know, especially when it is a, uh, something like this. Um, I will have to say that a, uh, truck stop, um, in the past, to myself, many truck stops were not as pretty as the truck stops they are today. So, um, that's, I, I can't say that's a, a, a bonus and makes you feel any better. Um, but I, I do, I do feel that Mr. Garber, did I say that right? Garber is, um, is providing a lot of, uh, willingness to work with the residential. Um, so, and Garrett, I guess my only concern about this is, um, when I look at the, um, commercial zoning here, um, C-three zoning, uh, several people have noted that there has to be a residential buffer between C-three and, um, and a residential area, you know, there has to be some kind of buffer between a C-three. Um, so my question is, if we rezone this, are we, are we, are we adhering to that? Are we breaking anything that we shouldn't be, uh, that can come back later and, and bite us?
Sure. So what's under section five forty of the zoning ordinance is what's required, which is a screening fence and landscaping, that is the buffering that is required by the zoning ordinance.
And is that a state ordinance, or is that what we have put in place as, um, over the years?
That is what this new zoning ordinance put into place.
Okay. All right. Um, the screening fence, um.
Right, so section five forty specifically for land uses such as truck stops, fueling stations, parking areas and service facilities. It requires a screening fence as outlined in section seven fifteen, installed along all boundary lines of budding adjacent to or opposite from residential districts. And in addition, a land state landscape screen shall be installed in accordance with section seven zero six.
Um, does it say, can you, I, I don't think, I could probably pull out my big book and, and find out what section seven fif- fifteen and seven oh six are. Um, you.
Pardon me?
Do you, um, have an idea what that screen is? I'm just, so it's out there? Is that a, is that, I mean, I, I heard that Brian said, Brian said they're willing to put in a, to put in an eight-foot fence, I think about driving through some of these cities that have, um, highways that come up their backyard, um, Atlanta is one of those that I think of, uh, that have the really tall fences and whatnot. Is this what we're talking about as a screen, or what is that?
Yes, yes, so, and again, this will get, this is what we'll dig into the, get into the weeds on and whenever the site plan is submitted, just for reference, this is where everything will be addressed and, um, make sure that it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. But seven oh six is the screening requirements, um, let me get into it.
And, and just so you know, to Mary Jane, um, I met with the neighbors in a kind of a town hall style, uh, forum at the end of August, when this first became a controversy, and, you know, we, we made some concessions with them. You know, among those were, uh, you know, with William Foring, he had brought, uh, some contract, he'd brought some estimates from a contractor. Um, we, we, you know, we've, we've given him not assurances that we'll use that exact contractor and that exact quote, but that he will be part of the process, and that the neighborhood is welcome to be part of the process of exactly what we plant. I know there's some specific trees that are in the ordinance that we've gone back and forth with, but, but we, we've got some latitude and some leeway where we're willing to work with the neighbors on exactly what gets planted, how many, and all that sort of thing. So I think we, you know, I think we've tried to demonstrate over the past eight months, and it has been eight months, um, that, that we are willing to bend over backwards to try to, to be good neighbors and to be, um, you know, with, you know, accessible, you know, and also, um, o- open-minded toward, toward their suggestions, I guess, I, I would say. So, um, you know, so regardless of what the ordinances say, you know, we, we're gonna honor those commitments. And, and I don't mean that in a bad way, I just mean that we, we're willing to even maybe go above and beyond.
Right.
Uh, in, in certain areas, um, you know, if we need to, to, to make them, to make them a little bit happier. Cause, you know, we, you know, we, we wanna, like I said, we wanna be good neighbors to them too. Uh, we understand their position, um, and I think they understand ours, and, and, and hopefully we can, you know, work together to, to make it a really, a beautiful place. I mean, I, I think when, when we, when we stop talking about zoning laws and ordinances and all that, and we just start talking about what this is really gonna look like at the end of the day, I think, I think people are gonna be surprised and shocked, um, at what it's, at what it could potentially be, in a good way.
And, and we're just talking about zoning right now, I, I do wanna emphasize that. I know, um, that it is just zoning, um, you know, I think, uh, everyone thinks as soon as we get it zoned, we, if we do rezone this to, uh, be able to accommodate him moving forward with the site plan, that means that it's automatically approved. Um, I guess my only, my only concern would be that if we do rezone this and, um, for some reason down the road, that we can't work out an, an agreement, um, and, and move forward with the site plan and the, and, and this, that then we have rezoned this and we will need to readdress it. Um, I also think that if we do rezone this, uh, if this is moved forward, that, uh, we need to really look at our other, and, and I've already said this once, but we really need to look at our other commercial areas and make sure that we're preparing, uh, properly and have a plan of what kind of businesses that we really want, um, to do this, you know, I, um, the truck stop, you know, or the travel center, uh, however you wanna say it, Brian, um, we all remember, there, there, there's always been truck stops here in Montegoal. It's always been kind of a part of our community, and I think, um, we wanna remember that heritage as well, but, um, we also wanna make sure that we are addressing, uh, as, as the whole nation is growing and expanding and we're coming from everywhere, that we're really preparing for it.
Brian, I have a question.
Um.
Thank you. You've said you're gonna have restaurants, and this is a, uh, it's not just a truck stop. It's going to be, there's restaurants and things like that for people to come to. And with the government passing the electric car, um, and planning to have electric cars, are you gonna put electric chargers there for cars? And big trucks that are gonna be electric?
We ab- we absolutely are, we're, we're planning on having either three or four. And for what you said prior to that, absolutely, it's gonna be. Uh, I think it's a destination place, um, for passenger vehicles as well as, um, commercial, uh, tractor trailers, so. Bojangles, um, most likely there will be a Taco Bell in there as well. There'll be a couple family-owned, uh, restaurants, um, Petro Grill and a Betty's Kitchen. Betty's Kitchen will be more of a meat and three, uh, kind of a home-cooked type, uh, place. The Petro Grill have everything from steaks to Philly cheese steaks to, um, you know, hopefully some of the best hot dogs, uh, buddy, anybody can make, and hamburgers, and, um, you know, really good food, uh, really quality food, and a, and a, and a really neat environment. We want it to be a neat environment for people to come. Very, you know, I'm always struck by, um, a lot of really good restaurants in Montegoal, and you, and you, and you go to them, and, and whether it be High Point or whether, um, Papa Ron's or the, uh, what's the sandwich shop, and the name is escaping me. Out and go, every, they're packed, and it's because they, because of what they do, they do it really well. And, and, you know, we wanna follow, we wanna follow that, that lead as well, so, you know, in any event, I thank you for. And I, a little bit of a, of a convenience store snob. The bathrooms are gonna be absolutely the cleanest bathrooms that you're gonna see, you know, anywhere. Um, the fuel pumps. You're gonna feel, you know, especially during the pandemic, we've all gotten, um, you know, a little bit more aware of, of, you know, putting gas and that sort of thing. So all of it, it's gonna be a professional operation, it's gonna be very clean, uh, very well kept, and, uh, and we hope it'd be a whole lot just, uh, a place for commercial trucks to come, to come get, get their gas on their way, you know, to somewhere else.
Is, is this the only acres that are left, or only piece of property is left that is not, uh, zoned properly to, to build?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
I didn't hear that.
Yes, yeah.
Is this.
The only piece, right. The rest of it has all been.
How many, how many acres is this, is this parcel?
The, the parcel that we're talking about is about six and a half acres, two and a half, two or little, two and a quarter has already been designated as wetlands.
Is, is, I heard you mention earlier that you could build on, like, I think you mentioned, thir- nine or thirteen acres. Uh, is, is this five or six acres critical to this project?
It is, I don't, I don't know, um, the comment that you're referencing about being able to build on the thirteen.
Well, you said you, you said you were using, utilizing more acres, so it was more flow on the property.
Oh, I was comparing it to the, I was comparing it to the pilot next door. They, they're in a little bit more of a cramped, my point there was, they're, they're, they, they do what they do in a little bit more of a cramped area than, than what we're gonna have. In terms of traffic flow, I think that'll give us some, you know, some advantages, some competitive advantages, uh, that'll make everybody's lives a little bit easier, even passenger vehicles getting in and out.
So if this is not approved and is not rezoned, what happens?
You know, it that would be, uh, that would be probably, uh, you know, some, a, a question for, you know, the attorney, the attorneys to, uh, to sort out at that point.
So it's, uh, it's, it's no deal, I mean, you can't build on less than this?
Right, no, absolutely, no, absolutely, it would absolutely kill the project as, as we've laid it out, absolutely.
Um, Sam, a question for you then would be, um, if this was not, um, rezoned, um, is that something that the city could see repercussions from?
Well, I mean, it can be the, the.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it, it can, it can be challenged in court, just like, uh, just like there was a court proceeding last year on this issue, uh, it, it can be challenged in court. Now, whether it can be successfully challenged in court is a different issue, but, but yes, it, the law allows it to be challenged in court.
Okay. Um, was this property, I know that we, we, before us, the planning, planning commission did for us, did they rezone this property?
There was, there was an error in the map, apparently, nobody knows who did it. It was changed through from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, Mary Jane. So yes, um, well, we received it, it was C-three on that, but then they found out it wasn't done properly. Not Sam wasn't that when, um, there was the three days that it like having.
Right, right. We, we had a, we had a phase, and, and the last, and the last rezoning that you made a recommendation on an hour and a half ago, I guess. Um, uh, the law requires a, a fifteen-day notice period for a public hearing in the context of one of these, and, and in the original rezoning of this property, which did go to C-three, uh, the, the notice period was not done appropriately. It was a three-day notice period rather than a fifteen. Uh, it got challenged in court. The court ruled in a way that inferred, although we haven't seen the final order yet, that inferred that it agreed that in fact, the three-day notice period was insufficient. And we have an opinion from the University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Advisory Service, which has an attorney who agrees with me that that's just not enough time.
Okay. Um, so when this, two thousand, the, what, the zoning map that we're using now, that was, this was, that was in place, Marilyn, when you left office, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's the one that, that's the one that we used whenever we started the planning and we started the process we were working on, and the landscaping. Uh, of course, you can see the phases where they were changed, we did go through the ordinance process, uh, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. So, and everything we did was, uh, two thousand sixteen is the one.
Okay, and so then when you left office, in that, in the time period since you, till now, um, it, the, another map had taken place.
And there was, um, well, the one we addressed, addressed with the FIPs, there's another one we know of. I think we counted, was it Sam, around thirty-four properties before it's over with, Mary Jane? We've got to go back and fix, that there's errors with, in that, um, timeframe. But with the ordinance that the town just passed, we went back to two thousand sixteen to have a good starting point up at this section of property, which was, uh, in court at that time.
So my understanding is, is that when Brian purchased the property, what he and his team or whatever, um, his, his development team, uh, was presented with was an inaccurate map?
Garrett, Garrett can tell you that, that's the map that they were using. Garrett?
The map, so when Mr. Graber first inquired last year, that was the, August two thousand eighteen map that we found was inaccurately approved.
Okay. So is the whole piece of property, all of it's been, uh, zoned since two thousand sixteen? Or just, are we talking just about the six and a half acres? Just the six and a half acres.
Okay.
The rest, I think it was done two thousand eight, or two, I don't know, it was done a good fall back?
We found evidence that one of them was, was rezoned, one aspect of it was rezoned in two thousand and three, right, Garrett?
Yes, so, you're already talking about the eastern portion of the current RBT property?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we did find an ordinance stating that that was properly rezoned from R-three to C-three back in two thousand and three.
I have a question. That's the front half of that, is that what you're saying?
It's the, it was, is the eastern portion of this parcel, I think it was the old Van Hooser property.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's the majority of the property, what we're talking about, that was done in two thousand and three. And then we have the six and a half acres that we're trying to talk about right now.
Correct. The, the ordinance I'm referencing, just for the record, is ordinance number sixty-three dash zero three dash twenty-seven dash A.
Now Garrett, uh, the front of the property has always been C-three, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
The west side of the property, yes.
Uh, Brian, did you buy all of this property thinking that, or knowing that it was, uh, appropriate for your use?
Absolutely, in fact, um, every parcel was surveyed, and there was, there was, I'm going off memory, Garrett may know, but I think it was ten separate parcels. There were two, uh, separate real estate transactions, real estate attorneys looking over those, and, um, and it was all zoned C-three commercial.
Hey, Brian, what was the delay? I know you said you presented this in February, what was the delay with your site plan with the former administration and the former planning commission? Cause this has been going. Because this has been going on for months.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, uh, we didn't even purchase the property though until the end of March. So, um, there really was not a delay. We worked with, started working with Garrett and his, his office in early March. Um, we hired some surveyors. We did TDEC. We, uh, we had the, uh, the wetlands issue come up, I think in late April or May. Uh, so, so there was just, you know, there was just a lot of work that went into it. I mean, the engineering costs that have gone into this project from, uh, through all of this, but you know, have, have been extensive. Um, you know, our engineer and our lead engineer worked with Garrett's office for several months, uh, between, between April and July. I think it was Garrett's, um, peer Chad that, that initially recommended for approval at the, I think for the August 2nd planning meeting. Garrett himself recommended for approval for the September 1st planning meeting. The delays since then have really, I guess, you know, I don't want to characterize them. Uh, uh, but you know, it's, it, yes, I, I'd rather just not even characterize it. But, but from, from, from March until July was just, I would say, a normal process of our engineers getting the site work developed, getting the permit from TDEC, uh, working with Garrett, and he was great to work with. You know, he'd send back recommendations for things that we, uh, and we'd send them back. So, so when it was ready for approval, um, you know, it, it was, it was, it was, you know, it had been looked at by, uh, people that do that, you know, people that do this for a living, um, between Garrett and then our, our, our surveyors and our engineers. I, it was, it was surveyed and engineered, um, properly for, for the August 2nd planning meeting. So the, you know, the delay has mostly been politi, obviously been political from, from August 2nd until today, so the last six months or so. Uh, but the, uh, you know, but the, but the, but the March to July, uh, timeframe, which is the normal course of doing this.
Just as a, a logistical, I've popped up and shared my screen so we can see the property in question.
And it's all been surveyed into one, into one parcel now. So, you know, it's not, you know, you don't have, you don't have 10 separate lots. All of that was done at the real estate closing at the end of March too, um, where, you know, when it, when it was originally surveyed and the real estate attorneys signed off on it. So all of that was done at that time. So it's really been almost a full calendar year since that was done.
Have a question. I had talked to Mr. Pete Van Hooser and he had said that he had sold that as commercial property and that, that he had had a hundred year flood study done on it and there was no flood area. It was just where the ditches had been covered up. But my question is, is I'm looking at this partial here that we're looking at. How far back do you build? I mean, there's got to be green space between the fence that Brian and him are going to build and the road, right?
There's got to be a lot of green space, yeah.
At the stop, at the four way stop, you've also got to have so much green space, right?
Absolutely. And all that's, all of that's on the site plans that have been, um, submitted and, you know, that, that you have actually up at the top.
So what I'm trying to, I guess what I'm asking is, are you only going, say, this is a six acre plot here, but are you only building like on the interior four acres?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I think so. And, and, yeah, I mean, um, you know, and I put some pictures on, on Facebook today. You know, obviously we all know what, um, some of these modern places look like. I mean, the building itself is going to be about a 24,000 square foot building, which is two and a half times, that's the main building, two and a half times the size of, you know, the, the neighboring pilot. But, um, you know, there's the infrastructure that'll be in place, the rest of it will be, will be done very, very well done. If you go look at, um, you go, you know, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I understand that, but, but, but it's, it's, it's a gorgeous property at Exit 158. That's, that's more of our, our local model. If I, if I, if I wanted to give you a local model, there's other, you know, there's properties in, um, in Hillsboro, Texas, in, in Morehead, Wyoming, that, that also, uh, you know, that, that we're going, we're going to take some other ideas.
Brian, what I'm asking is your development, your development is not going to be.
We're, we're somewhat flexible on land.
I'm over the top of him. It's got the floor, Marion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What I'm asking is your development is not going to be right on Stanley Street or right on Tressel Road. It's going to be set back so far.
Absolutely. 100%.
Okay. How many, how many businesses are going to be in this development roughly?
Well, inside of the main travel center, you're going to have the five restaurants that we've, that we've highlighted, um, and, and you know, not everything is set in stone in terms of, you know, what the boutique's going to look like and how that's going to, that's how that's going to operate, uh, or a barber shop or anything like that. But certainly the five main restaurants, a really modern sleek looking seastore, um, and, um, and there'll be, there'll be some other amenities in there too. But you know, we haven't finalized all the details.
You're not only catering to truck drivers, you're wanting more of the pedestrian traffic too, not pedestrian, the traffic. Yeah.
Tourists, lovely you are, Duran.
You're not going to have that much.
Or not. I have a monster development. No.
Okay. All right. You're not going to have, how many parking spaces do you have for trucks?
Probably in the neighborhood of about 150 to 100.
Okay. All right. And I just want to make one comment and then I'm through. Uh, I don't, I want to let the neighbors know that they have not been ignored, but while I am watching their comments down here, I do have questions for Brian that I wanted answered. So it wasn't like we're ignoring you. I don't feel like I am or anybody else is. So I'm done.
Uh, well, Duran, we're not, uh, doing the chat boxes and that always explained.
No, yeah, I just, you know, they were saying they were ignored and I just didn't want to play that. I'm good.
Um, so Brian, um, I'm clarifying, I'm just clarifying. I, I, I hear, I hear you saying that, um, when you purchased the property, you had your real estate lawyers come in and, and they went to the city and they asked for the zoning maps and they, they had all that done, you were given that. So when you purchased, when the, when the development and you, you purchased the property and, um, you were, by every legal means that you had available to you, um, this property was zoned, um, C3?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I, and obviously no one knew anything about this three day versus 15 day controversy. Somebody did, obviously, to, to, to get us here where we are today, but, but, but we didn't. And, um, and, and nothing came up. We had several conversations with the previous mayor in January and in February prior to us purchasing this land. And none, none of those conversations or, or, uh, concerns ever came. Everything was positive. Everything was, we'd absolutely love to have you here. And, and, and we were talking with other places too. And everybody, um, was very, you know, was very warming and welcoming and, um, and Montegoal just made, uh, all the sense in the world for all the reasons that we've laid out. Uh, but, but our conversations early on, prior to us going to the closing table on any of those lots, uh, was all welcoming and can't wait to have you here and whatever you need from us, you've got our support.
Right. And I, I, I do want, I do want the, um, I think it is very important for our community to know that, uh, I think people have said, oh, well, we've been put in this position and it, that's what we're signed up for. We're a planning committee, um, commission. We're, we're here to hear, hear you. We're also here to recognize what has been put into place and what, um, the growth plan is. We also know that unfortunately in this position, there's always going to be people that agree and disagree. And we have to, um, do our best to hear everyone, um, and, and, and take into account all the things that people have worked hard to, to do as well as, uh, on their properties as well as, um, on the commercial end. I mean, we're, there are plenty of us that, that live in this area that have been waiting for this growth to come so that we're, have the opportunity to grow. Um, and, and it's right here at our doorstep and it, it is very hard to decide what to do. Um, I've, I was in commercial real estate for many years and I, and I hear Brian, um, and his argument and, and it's very frustrating on his end, I know. Um, because if he did get this map, uh, from the city and, uh, that was how they proceeded, um, I, I, I am embarrassed as a, um, member of the community that, that it got to that point, that it, that this, that a map, a zoning map that was worked on for many, many years was just basically kind of sat on. Um, and that's frustrating. Um, so
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I see both, I, I see both sides of this argument very clearly. Um, and it's a very hard position for all of us here on the commission to be in because we are community members and we do love our Montegoal community and want everyone to enjoy it, um, for years to come. But it's, it's, it's a very difficult, uh, position to be in considering, um, what was presented, uh, to some, a developer that, that did their due diligence. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Is there any other member that wants to weigh in, ask anything, uh, from Brian? Uh, I don't really want to ask anything from Brian, but I want to clarify a few things. Uh, I know it's been brought up numerous times. Does anybody have a vested interest? Uh, I don't, or anyone else that I'm aware of on this board. We're all professionals. Mary, um, Mary Jane's brought it up a couple of times. This is the hardest position in the total of, um, my third term here, I've had to deal with the town of Montegoal. Montegoal had a plan in 2016. Mary, uh, Jane was part of it. Michelle, several of you on, Peter Beasley, and we had a plan. And, um, we were working that plan and that got dismissed. I can't help that. I can't help with the debacles we're in. We've got more than this one. We've got 34. We're here to protect Montegoal and all the residents. Not those that just come in the summer, not, it's every resident, every child and every person. And everyone's been considered. And whether y'all believe it or not, you do matter. We stay up on a knot dealing with this stuff, you know? And it's not for what we get paid or for the accolades. But we are doing the right thing. We're going to do the right thing for Montegoal. No decision here is going to be a good decision. I mean, you know, but we're put into this, this to do what's best for Montegoal for today and tomorrow and the future. And someone just mentioned electric car starter, or the electric starters. You know, we have them behind Town Hall. We've had them back here for how many years now? Um, Michelle and Mary Jane, what'd you say, five or six? We were the first ones to get up here. So you know what? That's what's in our planning. That got dismissed, but that's totally irrelevant now. We've got to fix these problems. Town Hall is now sitting on C3. Uh, right in front of the neighborhood there is C3. Once we deal with some of these other things, we have got to fix these debacles before it happens again. And that's what this not only planning commission, but also council is now commissioned to do in other areas. So, uh, nobody likes this, but what we have to do is for the best of everyone, all, ALL, and, um, to move forward. So. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments, uh, from the members? All right. Garrett, uh, you have a recommendation?
He's muted, Nate.
Gar, Garrett needs to be unmuted.
Oh, sorry. I don't know. That's, that's my fault again. Um, yeah, so you should have all this, my review in your packet. Um, it goes through, uh, a, a background of how we got here, why we're here. I think we've already covered that. Um, essentially establishes that there's R3 to the north. Obviously there's R1 to the east and C3 to the east and south. It goes off of the zoning map. The recommendation is based off the zoning map that was approved by the town council at the January 25th, 2021 council meeting. Uh, it details the sections of the zoning ordinance that was approved on the same date that will, that will, um, view, that the site plan that will come after this will be reviewed against. We've kind of talked about that at section 540, um, section 706 and 715. Um, and in light of those sections, staff recommends approval of the rezoning based on the following. Um, the rezoning of this portion of the property will be contiguous to the entire parcel as a whole. The property is along a state route and meets the intent of the interchange commercial district. And the Montegoal zoning ordinance regulates, regulates screening, buffering and fencing requirements along property lines adjacent to the residential districts that I briefly mentioned. Um, a little better. Now entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Garrett? All right, this is where the rubber meets the road, gang. Uh, after all of these presentations, this does not mean that it's a final approved. It goes, uh, Sam, would you revisit the process from here? This, uh, yay or nay goes where?
This is merely a recommendation from the planning commission to the town council. The town council will consider it twice. There'll be a public hearing at one of the, at one of the times the town council considers it. Uh, and if it is approved, it'll come back to you for consideration of the site plan, uh, and whether the site plan complies with the conditions in the zoning ordinance that relate to landscaping barriers and things of that nature.
All right. So what, as commissioners, we have the decision to move forward and with this rezoning recommendation in order for the process to continue or not, then it would be dead? It would be not approved and still go to the city council? Is that?
That's correct. All, all this is, is a recommendation or not, it still goes to the city council one way or another.
Okay. So commissioners, that's what we're going to weigh tonight via vote, voice vote? Are you ready?
No, can't be a voice vote. It's got to be a roll call.
I mean, I'm sorry. I, I thought that's what I meant. My apologies.
Um,
we're going to need a motion.
I think, uh, uh, just a comment, um, I could have them all day, I think. Um, I think as much as I hate all of this, um, you know, I kind of, I kind of sit on the fence of what I should do here. Um, uh, can I, can I abstain? Uh, but, um, I guess my question, you know, one of my biggest concerns about as we move forward is one that Marilyn's addressed as we, we do need to, as a planning committee, whatever we decide right here, we need to really look at everything else because I feel like in looking at the zoning map that was approved at the council, there's some things that we need to address and make sure that we're prepared for, um, going forward. And, um, one of those biggest items is Garrett's helping so much with saying, okay, when we approve a site plan, that we have to have all these items checked and, and we've got to have the zoning right and all these things. But here we are again at a big growth pattern and, um, I have seen businesses that are being developed that, that are not, that there are many codes that are being violated, um, throughout the town, um, as far as commercial developments, um, with, with screening, with, um, trash, um, all kinds of things that we need to figure out or the council needs to figure out, um, when we have these going in here, um, so that we are protecting our citizens. Because it's one thing to say, okay, let's, we, we, we see this. Unfortunately, um, the administration that was before us, uh, presented a legal document that, um, at that, was legal at that time. It's not legal now, but at that time showed an inaccuracy, a wrong, um, and they went off that. It's not legal now, but at that time showed an inaccuracy, a wrong, um, and they went off that. And so we rezone this, then, then it goes to council. They have to do whatever they're going to do. Then we have to go through the whole process of site plan and all these ordinances that are in place for the zoning ordinances and everything. Um, I'm concerned that, uh, just that it's going to be enforced because I want the community, yeah, the pollution, the light, all that stuff, it, it's not what I like to hear. And, and there was, uh, Mr. Barry, you know, I, I've seen all these emails. They come in my box. I don't necessarily respond, but I definitely read them all. You know, there are concerns about fire, there are concerns about, um, police and all this stuff. And just the building of this. And I hear Ms. Terrell that's saying, you know, we, we were, we've been behind this and we've asked for somebody to come and enforce some codes and we're getting nothing. Um, so I, I'm, I'm concerned that if we do move forward this, with this, then that moves everything else a little bit forward because of us approving this, that, um, are we prepared to enforce these codes, not only to this truck stop, but to other things in the community that, that the council hear that and make sure that, um, they kind of address that?
Stay on topic.
Sorry.
Mary Jane, one of the things that, um, and I'll just speak, this has nothing to do with this situation, but you can ask Earl and Jack both. They've been going out and looking and Earl has a list, actually tomorrow he'll be looking at properties where things have happened. I don't, I'm not making excuses, I'm not saying why it is, but they were enforced before. That's the reason some people were not happy after, you know, two thousand sixteen, it is what it is. But every day was treated the same. They were enforced and we were in the building process. Uh, you were part of the landscaping, you helped it together. We, we didn't have anything, we're doing that. But yes, they will be enforced. Earl, you're there now, and I'm not talking about this one project. There's a lot of projects that we are going to have to go back and revisit because they're not in compliance. There's more than one. As you said, you can drive down the, the streets of Mont Eagle and find them. And yes, that's to all of them to want. We're not out hunting things and looking for things wrong, but yes, there's a lot of wrongs that need to be made right. And from this point on, whatever we do collectively is we ensure it's done a hundred and ten percent wrong. You know, and as long as we're here, that's all we can do. But Earl, are you still here? Yeah, that's what I was just checking to say, just to, um, the things that we discussed, the things we've discussed been brought to your attention. I know it's been brought to night, Jessica Babalor. You're addressing things as early as tomorrow that, uh, to make sure that they are, if they're not in compliance, they're getting in compliance. Is that not correct?
That's, yes, yes ma'am, that is correct. Now, what you've got to understand, I haven't been doing property maintenance now for about three years. I, I don't do property man, uh, property maintenance over the science. I do building inspection. Now, uh, I've got three jobs I'm looking at tomorrow, but they're typically just building inspection projects.
Well, now there's a couple you and I talked about, and then we called Jack up here the other day because we had some issues to deal with. And if, I don't know how that was separated, I don't know what the former council did, but we can ensure that the right person is enforcing those things. There's a lot we're.
I'm glad you're here to, it's, it's, that's what I want to be here. And, um, you know, someone's got to make this motion is what, I, I know we got, we got to stay on topic, so.
Uh, uh, Brian, uh, has his hand. I'm going to do one more for Brian. Can you unmute? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, just for Mary Jane, you know, um, it, it, and I don't want this to come out, but it is, it is a fifteen or sixteen million dollar project. We will have surveyors, contractors. We've also offered to let Mr. Gary, um, be a part as much as he wants to be in terms of like the overseen and the inspection of, uh, so we've, we've made that commitment as well. But it's a, you know, between the financial community and ourselves and just the amount of money and the investment in this project, um, we're not going to be cutting corners. It's, it's, it's really not a, it's not a mom and, and Petro, you know? Petro's name and reputation is going to be part of this too. So it's, it's not just a mom and pop travel center. It's, it is a, is a commercial development similar to what you see down at exit one seventeen right now with the Loves, uh, and similar to, to what has already been built at exit one fifty-eight with the Loves, so.
But let me, let me also got to comment here a little bit. Once, once there's a building permit being issued, uh, there'll be all the zoning, that when the site plan is approved, everything's going to be on that site plan that Mont Eagle zoning ordinance requires. I will be the guy that sees that the site plan is totally adhered to. So once planning commission passes this site plan, be sure that you're exactly on there, exactly what you want. And I will see that it happens. And as far as the construction goes, I've been doing this for years. I'm certified in several areas. Twenty-four thousand square foot building doesn't, doesn't scare me. I, you know, I've, I've done buildings all my life, so I'm comfortable with taking that project on. So any questions you might have about that, I'll be, I'll try to answer. But that's, I, I feel good about it. Guys pass this thing and it applies, I'm ready to go to work.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, any other questions? Someone's going to need to make a motion.
Okay, this is R three now?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make a motion to, um, rezone it from R three to C three.
Your, your motion would be to recommend the rezoning?
Yes. I recommend the rezoning from R three to C three.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
Peter Beasley says second, any discussion? All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. Peter Beasley?
Hi.
Richard Black?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Durane Parmley?
Yes.
Marilyn Rodman?
Yes.
Uh, Michelle Russell, yes. Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
It approves, this is a recommendation that goes on to the city council. Is that correct, Sam?
Correct.
All right, uh, uh, is there any properly presented new business? Garrett, anybody else on our docket?
No ma'am, not for me.
Hey. Earl, do you have anything that might be up the path?
No, not right now.
All right, uh, public comment is open now if you choose, uh, your three minutes. If you, you're more than welcome to have it. Okay, we've got Lucy.
Hey, guys. I've been commenting all along and I just want to say that I could not be more disappointed. I feel that the deck has been stacked from the beginning against these neighbors whose concerns are not only viable, but they are heartfelt. And your decisions could not have been further from serving those who already live in Mont Eagle, protecting those who already are invested in Mont Eagle, and siding with outside developers for something that will be a blight on Mont Eagle for the rest of our lives. And this will become part of your legacy. I hope you are pleased with yourselves for ignoring what has been put in front of you, for the research that has been put in front of you, for the heartfelt feelings that have been put in front of you, for those who desire to protect this plateau and Mont Eagle as the gateway to the Cumberland Plateau. You have essentially signed up for something ruinous. I cannot congratulate you. I am embarrassed for you.
Thank you. We've got another hand?
Yep.
Um, yes, my name is Mary Beth. I am, uh, at five-two-one Lots &amp; Hizer Place in Mont Eagle. I am two hundred yards or less from a C three truck stop development. I bought my home, my neighbors bought and built their homes with a secure R three buffer. And what you have done is stolen that from us with your recommendation. I do hope the council votes it down, but being that most of you are all the same, it's probably not going to happen. We have sent you your own ordinances, we have sent you your own laws. We have written complaints about the current business and not one person has supported us in it. You have not enforced the laws that exist. And we are supposed to trust you with this twenty acre monstrous development that is going into our neighborhood. Congratulations, that's what you're doing, that's what you're recommending from Garrett Haynes to the mayor, to everybody else that voted for it. And don't tell me this about not in my backyard because nobody deserves a truck stop in their backyard. And that's exactly what you're recommending. I am incredibly emotional about this because I don't care if I haven't lived here for four generations. You don't listen to people that have lived here for four generations. But we bought here, we invested in this community, just like everybody else. And we don't have a fifteen million dollar property, but when it's all in an, uh, perspective, we are invested just as much, if not more than R B T. They are not voters, they are not citizens, they are not part of this community. And you just recommended everything go in their favor, completely ignoring all of our pleas to all of you. And I am truly passionately disappointed with all of the leadership here. It's unbelievable how many requests under the Freedom of Information Act that I have been denied. How many requests under the Tennessee Open Meetings Act that I have been denied as a citizen of this community? I have begged you, Sandra and Ron Terrell, the Mooney, the Moons, the Nunleys have begged you to protect them. And you have not. You are doing nothing to protect the citizens that are already here and live here. Thank you for the opportunity for expressing myself. I don't think I leave any room for doubt how I feel about it.
All right, anybody else would like to say their piece before we take a motion to adjourn? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion to adjourn.
I need a second?
Second.
Do we do roll call on that one, Sam?
Roll call.
All right, Peter Beasley?
Hi.
Richard Black?
Yes.
Mary Jane Flowers?
Yes.
Durane Parmley?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Marilyn Rodman?
Yes.
Russell, yes. Janet Miller Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I know this has been a really hard decision for everyone. Godspeed and, uh, thank you.